Once again, let us remain standing and think about how service men and women protecting our country and serving around the world. Welcome to the Village Board meeting, Monday, June 3rd. The next upcoming meetings will be the Village Workshop meeting Tuesday, June 25th at 7:00 PM. And the next regular Village Board meeting of trustees will be on Monday, July 1st at 7:00 PM. We also had the discussion previously in the workshop about the summer workshop schedule, so there will be no workshops scheduled for the August and September meeting, which means the July 30th workshop is canceled and the August 27th workshop is canceled. Is that correct, Board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a special guest here tonight, and it's the 2019 Girl Scout Silver Award Project, Little Free Libraries will be presenting to the Board and to the Village this evening, so if you will. You have to, yeah, pull down, am I getting like speak into it?
Hi, is this good? So, my name's Leona Wilcox and...
And I'm Gabrielle Vavel.
And we're both eighth graders in Suffolk Middle School, and we're working on our Silver Award project this year, and so, as you said before, we're working on our Little Free Libraries, so...
If you could just speak a little closer to the mic, like pull it closer to you.
Okay. So, I'm gonna read it off the paper, so I think you all have copies, so you can follow along.
Yes.
We're the Girl Scouts in Suffolk Troop 40176, working towards our Silver Award. We would like to install two Little Free Libraries in Bonner, Suffolk, and Fountain Park, Hillburn. We believe our Little Free Library project will provide reading resources for people in our community who do not have easy access to books. It would encourage people to read and help kids grow up to be thoughtful, engaged citizens while connecting with the community in a fun and positive way.
So, the question is, what is a Little Free Library? A Little Free Library is a nonprofit organization that aims to inspire a love of reading, build community, and spark creativity by fostering neighborhood book exchanges around the world. Basically, it's a way for the community to reach a higher education and mindset without going to their local library, which could be far away. With smart people comes a smart neighborhood.
So, the question arises of why Hillburn and why Bonner, and there is no public library in Hillburn, and approximately 1,000 people live in Hillburn, which is 2.3 miles away in a 48-minute walk to the Suffolk Free Library. And there are about 3,000 people living in Bonner, many of whom cannot drive, cannot go to the Suffolk Free Library because they're too young or too old to drive or walk. And the Little Free Libraries in these locations will give adults and children easy 24/7 access to reading and a greater sense of community.
So, the location in Fountain Park in Hillburn is the one that is currently there now on the paper. It is currently approved. Yay.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you. There's a lot of park benches, so people can sit down and read if they're walking their dog, and there's this beautiful gazebo that will help relax you as you read.
And so, in Bonner, where I live, we want to put it, and the picture is stated above, it's on the corner of Bonner Circle West and Milford Lane, and it's highly visible location, and there's a T.O.R. bus stop, and there's a park bench there, and it's right in front of the pool, so if you walk down to the pool, maybe you can get a book, stop in and read, and yeah. And there's a Suffolk and C.S.D. bus stop right across the street for Suffolk Middle School, so maybe a kid would wanna take a bus, a book after school.
Our completion goal is August 9th, 2019, which just so happens to be National Book Lovers Day. That's awesome. And our project won't really cost that much money because we already have, well, we're getting most of the building materials, labor, and books donated, so we just need your approval. And Little Free Libraries across the nation are renowned for community involvement, and we believe that people will continue to use and share books if we move away.
And so, just before we decided to implement Little Free Libraries into our homes, we looked around where we live, and we found other Little Free Library success stories, and in the one on the page shown is in Ridgewood, New Jersey. It's in front of a library. It seems to be going pretty well. It's cute, so...
And then, another one that we found, that's a picture of us. Another one we found is in Clusterd, New Jersey, which is right in front of like this campground, so after kids come back from camp, they can walk past and they can see this Little Free Library, which they can take a book and read books and stuff.
And so, on the last page is our contact info. My name is L. Wilcox at SuffolkCentral.org, and my address is below.
And mine is Jevavale1@DufftCentral.org, at 28 Chestnut Avenue, Hillburn, New York.
That's it, thank you.
Well, let me tell you something, that was a very good presentation, and I'm very impressed for two eighth grade students to get here and do that presentation, it was excellent. And we did speak about the Little Library also last week at our workshop meeting, so if we can give us some more detail on who will be maintaining it, or constructing it, or donating the books to it. How would that?
Um, in Hillburn, yeah. Yeah. In Hillburn, there are certain like fire departments that are like chipping in to like, 'cause there's memorials in the Fountain Park, they're chipping in to keep it where people can access it without like damaging the veterans parks. And there's also like a lot of people that are working on the Board in Hillburn that are offering to donate books. And also, both of our fathers are also donating to give us lumber and stuff like that to build the libraries, so...
And in the one for Bonner, we were thinking about, this is like a legacy project, so what we wanna see is for other Girl Scout troops, maybe Brownies or even Daisies, to keep donating books, or keeping up or looking after it, even when we're not Girl Scouts anymore and we're onto our lives. So, it'll be safe, and also maybe parks and recreation can help if something gets vandalized, which is very low chance, but that's really it about restoration and upkeeping.
And the start date, when would we like to start this project?
Well, we already had a lot of things approved, and we're planning on building it this month, and painting it and designing it, and I don't know exactly an implementation date for either one, but it's gonna be soon, maybe a month or two.
Okay. Charles, Mrs. Wiki, to speak about the, the access for the Little Library, Little Free Library, please. This is something that's very exciting for the villages of Suffolk, and, very exciting for the villages of Suffolk, and I think it will benefit the community, as the girls were saying, so any, in any way which we can help, I would, you know, solicit the help from you and the DPW. But I know you, you looked at the site, is that correct?
Yes, met with Nancy from the Recreation Department, and one of the adult representatives, I forgot her name, I apologize. The location is in the village of Suffolk right away, so it doesn't impede on any private property, so we didn't see that, it would seem like a very good location, and I think they had everything under control. We talked about how things would be, you know, how they would actually be able to go ahead and construct the, so it's gonna be a post, I believe?
Yes.
Like a mailbox-type post, and it would be framed off of that, and if we, you know, I offered any, if the Public Works could provide any help, we certainly would do that.
Perfect. Anyone from the Board have any questions?
Do you girls think you need to have somebody dig the post hole? And set that maybe with concrete or something?
The discussion we had at, at the, at the site, that we did talk about because of law, there is a mark out, utility mark out request, although you don't, not going that deep, and it's only a post, and, you know, we discussed all the requirements, and it sounded like they had everything under control. Certainly, if they need some help, we would...
Great.
Okay. I think just on, on the, I think we just need to take a motion to get an agreement with the Board in the, allowing the 2019 Girl Scout Silver Award Project, Little Free Libraries, I make that motion for it to move forward with the assistance from the Village at the location at Bonner Circle and...
Milford Lane.
Milford Lane. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Albert, second by?
Second.
Ms. Hertz, Trustee Hertzman, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
So, you're approved, and I really applaud you girls, great job. Get higher than them. They're so well spoken.
Yeah, they did.
They did great. I can't wait. Fire Department Chief Lapori.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just have a few items tonight. First one, we'd like to accept a new member, Kevin Graham, an over 18 member to the hose company.
Make a motion to accept new member Kevin Graham and add him to the insurance policy for the hose company. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Gerard, second by?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Uh, the next thing we got, I don't know if we ever got the list from Amy, though, for the surplus equipment, the chief's car and the air packs. You could, you could make a motion to surplus those if you want, or whatever.
Right here, yes, so I have the resolution in front of me. So, I have the resolution to deglass certain fire equipment as surplus, whereas the Board of Trustees has been advised that the following fire department equipment is no longer necessary or useful to the Village and should be declared surplus. One, a 2008 Ford Expedition XLT with approximately 94,000 miles, VIN number 1FMFU16568LA08522, and number two, 28 Scott SCBA's with the following serial numbers as attached, and 12 and additional with faded ineligible serial numbers. Correct. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Hertzman, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a clarification on the SCBA's, these were, these are no longer qualified federally, so if there's any interest, it would be from another country, right?
It would be with another country or someplace else, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be here.
Right.
I mean, if they took them here, they wouldn't be compliant, but...
Right.
All of these items, including the, I guess it's 40 SCBA's plus the car, are they all gonna be put on the same website or whatever for disposal for?
I'm not sure how we're handling that yet, but I mean, it's up to the...
They go to an auction site?
Yeah.
Yes. Auctions.gov.
Auctioned.
Chief, do you know the, the extension, the, yes?
That's GovDeals.
GovDeals, excuse me.
And essentially, what we do is Joe Hunt will look up the value of the Ford vehicle, and he will set a minimum price for that, where he can get it, otherwise just junking it, and then anything over that, of course, would be bid in. And the SCBA, yes, we would put those out, and whoever picks those up. In addition to foreign countries, there might actually be fire departments around the country that can't afford SCBA, and it's better than nothing at all, so...
So, it's safe to assume that although these can't be certified, these 40 SCBA's are, for the most part, operational?
I mean, they're operational, they can test.
None of them, like, none of them will put anybody in danger, right? Like, I think we should...
No, not that I would.
Yeah, that's perfect, then. I think we should sell them, that's perfect. I just wanna make sure we don't sell something and have a lawsuit come back, 'cause hey, that thing is terrible.
They would be on their own with these, I mean, 'cause, you know, like I said, we can't, we can't certify it to tell you that it meets the standards anymore, so...
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, and the next thing that's come up, authorization for the Suffolk Fire Department to host a 50-year celebration dinner for ex-chief James Donato. Just to be, just to be clear on this, I believe this dinner's gonna be held up in Slotsburg, they rented their hall for this.
Okay, and we provided them with the insurance rider, the insurance certificate?
Yeah, I guess that's what, you have to approve it first to get it...
Is there an additional cost for that, Mayor? An additional insurance rider?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing the Suffolk Fire Department to host a 50-year celebration dinner for ex-chief James Donato at the Slotsburg Fire Department Hall. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, and I'd just like to thank the Board for the new SCBA's that came in and the new chief's car. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for all the dedication you guys in the service you provide, the Village, and the event over the weekend, the toucher truck, I thought it was a great event, I was down in and had good participation, so thank you, keep up the great work.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
No, okay. Ms. Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. A few things that we have coming up, June is starting to be a very busy month. Tonight, if you saw in the park, we have yoga in the park started tonight. There's a big crowd, I was very happy to see, the first, the first time last year in June had not as many people, so it's already off to a good start.
They got a great night.
Yeah, it's a beautiful evening out tonight. So, the Monday nights will be the June 3rd, 10th, 17th, and the 24th, and that's at 6:30 with Nancy Christopher from Recreation. June 4th, which is tomorrow, we'll have the read-through for Clifford Theater Matilda, so the kids will come in, they'll get their parts, and they'll learn what they're gonna be playing in the play this year. We have 43 students signed up this year for Clifford Theater, so it's a great, great outcome for the amount of people that we have, so we're excited for that. June 5th, which is this Wednesday, will be Senior Law Day, so the Rockland County Office of the Aging picks a few sites in Rockland to work with seniors, and they have chosen the Suffolk Community Center, so they're going to do a Senior Law Day before the senior meeting on Wednesday between 10 and 12, and then the senior meeting will start at 12. So, they already have, for RSVPs, they already have 60 people, so it's a big RSVP, we're excited for the amount of people that have signed up for it already, so that will be at 10 to 12 on Wednesday, if anyone's interested in coming by. Nancy reached out to one of the companies, one of the organizations in the Village, Movement for Life, and he is going to do some scheduled classes over at the gazebo, he's doing them for free, he's doing it so the community can meet him, he can meet the community, and they're going to be on the lawn, just very similar to what we're having tonight for yoga, on Wednesdays, on June 5th, 12th, 19th, and the 26th, again at 6:30, so if anyone's interested, come on out to, to see Movement for Life. He's not charging us, we're not charging him, it's a, it's a nice collaboration. June 6th, which is Thursday, we're hosting an Eagle Scout Ceremony for Daniel Muniz. He is the gentleman, the student that did the 9/11 ceremony, ceremony location outside, so his Eagle Scout Ceremony is 7 o'clock on Wednesday night.
Let's talk about that, Kathy, just to remind, let's talk about that tomorrow, the, the ceremony itself.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a note. June 6th is the last arty time before the summer, and that will be Thursday at 12 o'clock. June 7th, the Project at the Gazebo, the Total Recall Company that I've mentioned before is doing their Volunteerism Day for their community, for their company, and it will be June 7th, which is Friday, and we had a meeting today, we're going, the projects that they're going to do is going to paint the gazebo all white, paint the ground floor in the gazebo gray, they're going to do some plantings and do ties, the railroad ties over in front of the community center, so, Maury, I know we're starting to talk, and so we'll talk maybe tomorrow about the plantings and everything. So, it's gonna be a beautiful project, it's, they're gonna be able to see it every day that they go to work, know that they helped us, and they got a chance to give back to their community, so they're thrilled that they're able to do this for Suffolk, so thank you very much for letting us go forward with that. June 7th, on Friday night, at the gazebo area, but in front of because of the painting, the lead outdoor concert will be on at 5:30 on the lawn. This is the high school students who take an opportunity every year, they have an outdoor concert on the lawn, and it's a nice experience for them to be able to give a free public concert, so that's open to everybody.
So, we're gonna have the gazebo cordoned off?
Yeah, and they usually don't go inside the gazebo because they like to be seen out front of it, so yes, the gazebo will be cordoned off because it will be newly painted.
They use the electric, though, don't they?
They use the electric, but we, we will be able to snake it around the front, front and side, so we won't affect, we won't, we have another pole there as well, actually, come to think of it.
All right.
So, we will not affect the paint on the gazebo.
Perfect.
Um, June, I'll take a little dip into the June, right after June 7th, on June 9th, which is this Sunday, at the community center, there's going to be a fundraiser for A.R.C. of Westchester. They're group, they're partnering with a wrestling group who's going to be doing a wrestling match at the community center. Amy and the Mayor introduced a gentleman named Kevin to us who runs this group, runs this wrestling group, so they're going to have at 2:30 a wrestling event over at the community center. So, we will start to put up flyers, I'm waiting for him to send some over, and it's gonna be a nice day, it's, it's an event that we're hosting for them. A.R.C., as we all know, is a nice organization, so we're gonna help them out by, by hosting them at the community center.
Sorry, what time is that?
Uh, 2:30 on Sunday. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Okay, so June 14th is Art in the Park, we're looking forward to that. Last year, it had gotten rained out. This year, it will be rain or shine, we will go inside the community center in case the weather doesn't stay, but we're hoping for a beautiful evening on Friday night, June 14th. We have Connor School, the kids from Connor School are participating, we're hoping to get some kids from the middle school. The high school, we don't think we'll get because it's so late in the season, that they, the high school kids are gonna be moving on already, but we have a nice group, we have the seniors that do arty time, so we have a lot of, a lot of nice interest in this for arty, for Art in the Park. June 15th, which is Saturday, we have the Fishing Derby, will be at Foxwood Pond, so registration starts at 9:30. We have fishing at 10:00 AM, and then the Mawa Elks is going to be sponsoring and cooking for a barbecue over there, so we're looking forward to that day over at Foxwood Pond. June 18th is Ladies Night, which is upstairs in the community room. Nancy, again, has worked with groups from the community, we have people coming in from the nail salons, the hair salons, they're gonna come in, do free demonstrations for makeup, for hair. It's a nice night, we have mocktails, we do not have cocktails there, we will have mocktails and munchies, so it's a nice event for ladies and gentlemen, are welcome as well.
I need a little help.
There you go, you come on up, we'll help you out.
There you said, no, you, no you don't.
No, you don't. So, that's gonna be upstairs in the community room on June 18th, and then pool registration, as I mentioned at the workshop, will be starting on June 24th. We have five registration dates for pool registration, and that, that night, June 24th, is 4:00 to 7:00 PM in the community room. June 24th, again, I look towards Chief, we have the Dare Pool Party over at the, at the pool, Dare Pool Party. June 25th, again, I mentioned, no activities at the community center and Leo Liden because it's primary day. June 29th, there will be a Midget Mounties fundraiser at the community center in the evening, and then June 29th, that, that day, the pool opens at 11 o'clock for the season. So, looking very forward to the pool season and all that it will entail. On the main menu there, it has that, the main agenda, Recreation Calendar Update, the Mayor and I met last week to look over the calendar, it's looking fantastic. I have to say that I erred by the last page, we always have addressed to resident, when you get so used to looking at something, I didn't realize that that needed to be changed. The Mayor did notice that, so the designer actually fixed it, sent a new one today, it looks great. I'm hoping that we will be able to sit and get that finished and go to print as soon as possible. The PDF of the calendar will be put on the, on the website, so as soon as we approve it, let it go, we'll be able to put that up. We've had numerous, numerous calls, people are looking for information on pool registration, so as soon as we can finalize that and get the, get the PDF of that, we'll put it up on the, on the website. But it looks great, it looks real, I'm really excited for it.
Just going back to the event for, off the fundraiser?
Yes.
So, what, what I would like to be subject to the Village Attorney's approval, review and approval of the insurances and everything else, okay?
Thank you.
So, make sure that gets done through Ralph?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll get your information.
And whatever contract documents are necessary, and the, and the insurance certificate.
Right, okay.
Also, can you remind me, what time is the, the Dare Party at the pool?
I'm not sure, Clark, I'm sorry, the Dare Pool Party, what time are we having now?
You guys, 2:00 to 5:00.
2:00 to 5:00, which one or not?
We gotta have this, we just do it later, find a kid, what he's just parked in the lot, and that's it.
And Kathy, are we sending the calendar out via Constant Contact as well?
Yes, definitely, definitely, yeah, every means that we can, we'll put it on the Facebook page, we will put it on Constant Contact, we'll probably send a couple of that, a couple times out on Constant Contact to make sure people gets it, but yes, it definitely will go out for that.
Great.
Yep.
And the link through Nixle?
Nixle, we can send that as well.
We'll send the link, you know, inviting the people to look at the bulletin, and that will guide them right back to the page, to the webpage.
Yeah, we definitely wanna get that out as much as possible because people are gonna look, look forward to it. And I think that is, and again, I'm, I'm sorry.
When the fish gets stocked in the pond?
So, the Fishing Derby's on Saturday, they always go in on Thursday, two days before because the fish needs to acclimate, so I'll be meeting the, the people from the fishery or hatchery, what is it? Hatchery, I'm sorry, on Thursday.
The ones that are already hatched.
They're already hatched.
All right.
So, they, so they acclimate, so Thursday, two days before the Derby, they'll be putting the fish in the pond, and then we typically put up a no fishing, and the police are very good.
I'll tell you, I was down at the pond last week, or two weeks ago, whenever it was, with Mrs. Hagerty?
Right.
And there were some whoppers in there.
Yeah.
The size, I think they're, I don't know.
Those are carp.
Carp?
Yeah.
They're big.
They'll eat you.
Right?
So, I, I was at the pond today.
Yes.
And there's a lot of algae limbs.
Yes, yep, Joe and I were talking, we're, we're waiting and hoping for the aerator, but as we discussed at the workshop, we don't know if we're gonna get that up before the Derby, so DPWs can do all that they can to make sure that the pond is, is better and serviced before the, for the...
Can they rake it? Because it is partly due to like, you know, sludge and growth, you know, along the edge, can they?
So, Charles, we were just saying...
Rake it, or pull it out? Because it is getting pretty thick now.
Is there a way for?
Raking?
Yeah.
Take a look at it.
Pretty murky. I'm just curious, just for knowledge sake, as far as the pond getting stocked?
Yes.
Like, is it 100 fish, is it 1,000, I mean, like, what to stock?
I have the numbers upstairs, this is good amount that go in there, there's bass, and I should, I don't have it in front of me, but there's, there's a good amount of fish that go into the...
I'm just curious, I mean, is it?
I have some, I have some, I have some, I have some.
Yeah, there is this...
I have some good fish, it's very nice.
And it's good for the environment, so after the Derby, it's good for families to go down to, to use the pond as, as it's meant for, so it's...
And it's a cost sharing also.
Yes, I had that on mine before, and I got off track. So, the Mawa Elks, in the past, they haven't been able to combine with us, this year, they are going to split the bill with us for the fish, so they sent us a check the other day, I have it upstairs, so when we pay for the fish to the hatchery, we will give them our share and the Mawa Elks. And they're really generous with us because the barbecue, they take out, they take care of the entire thing, they take care of it, they pay for all the food, so it's a really wonderful collaboration with the two of us, and it's a nice event for kids, so we're gonna, you're gonna start to see that getting out on, on Facebook, on, on Constant Contact a lot this week, as we want the kids to see it. We went up to Community Day the other day, I handed the flyers to the second grade, to all the teachers, so we're hoping that we'll get more kids coming in from that, so it's, it's a great day, it's, it's a...
Let's also talk about that tomorrow, Mawa Elks, just remind me.
Okay.
We'll talk about that, we'll talk about the community center and the Eagle Scout Project and Total Recall.
Could somebody contact Daniel Muniz about the couple of dead bushes that are, you know, right at the very edge? Those little like arper bodies?
Right.
When we talk tomorrow, I don't know if there's any...
Yeah, let's, we'll discuss that, too.
Okay.
He might be able to get them replaced for free, with just less than a year.
And again, the Girl Scouts did a great job, we're really happy to be working with them. Nancy and Charles, like he said, went up to see the, the location with them, they're really excited, it's working well, starting for them in Hillburn, so it's a nice opportunity for Girl Scouts to do in the community, so we look forward, we will work with them, whatever they need to, to get. they need to, to get.
That's great.
Thank you, thank Nancy for bringing that to our attention, and, uh, good Community Day, we had a great, a great day at Community Day.
It was, it was a lot of fun, kids really enjoyed it.
Was that Wednesday, when was that?
Friday.
Friday.
Friday, yeah. Days are flying. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Chief Osborne, Police Department?
Just, just for an update, nothing to vote on tonight, uh, during the month of May, we had 783 police calls and blotters during the month. I spoke to you a little bit at the workshop about our credit, our accreditation process. We are a New York State accredited police agency through the Division of Criminal Justice Services in New York State, about 20%, only about 20% of the close to 600 agencies in New York State, police departments are accredited, we feel it has a tremendous benefit, it gives us over 100 standards that we need to meet on a professional basis. Every five years we are re-accredited, we were credited in 2009, 2014, in this October, we'll have three accreditors for three days at our police department, going through all of our policies, asking officers questions, grilling me about different policies, how we handle complaints, evidence, as well as all the officers involved in the process. We think it's excellent to have, and speaking to Ralph and the attorney as well as the insurance carrier, they think it's a very positive thing and a very good thing for us to have in defensive liability in any case when you're accredited agency. Basically shows that you're a professional police department, all these different standards that the state recommends. So we're gonna be, we're at, we're working on it very hard now, and we'll be continuing at this point up until October, Lieutenant Lachlan is overseeing that. This past month, we conducted several seatbelt and aggressive driving details, which resulted in numerous warnings and summonses. A lot of these details, most of them, we did a reimbursement by New York State, the Government's Traffic Safety Bureau, we applied for grants. Now, and we find out pretty soon if we got them, and the calendar year for them goes October 1 to October 1. We did these on multiple roads, Route 202, multiple summonses, aggressive driving particularly. We did a lot of seatbelt checks in Orange Ave, Washington Ave, Chestnut Street, just roads that people wouldn't expect us to have them on, we did them, we had great results. This past Friday, I assisted our officers, there's five of us in Washington Ave, and we, really, the results were fantastic, several vehicles taken off the roads and registered, suspended arrests, very good results from that. This month, we're going to focus it on distracted driving. What I found is that as it gets warmer and nicer, we get a lot more people on the phones, looking down at texting, a lot more people are distracted by everything. So we're gonna be conducting, uh, details for distracted driving this particular month. We just, we will, the officers on patrol look all the time for these violations, but we're gonna specifically be focusing on addressing them this next month. Community wise, we did a lot this past month, we were, once again, participated, I had, we had three different stations at the Community Day at Connor School, K9 Patrol Corp, Humvee, I think the kids, good job Kathy, thank you for including us, and Mayor, uh, for being part of it as well. We participated in the fire department's touch a truck event this past Saturday. We also will be having our big event, which is our P Connor School Olympic Day barbecue, it's for probably about 800 people at this time, so eight, probably eight of us officers at Connor School pretty much all day, cooking and, uh, supplying the kids and the families with food and drinks. Here we are, going to go shopping on Thursday to pick up all the supplies, and, um, that's pretty much it, we've had this one, we also did the barbecue from Memorial Day, the mayor asked, which is, which is great to do, and just one last thing, the mayor and I spoke about, just real quickly, here, Mayor, I had a, a good idea, I think you spoke to some of the staff at Village Hall, I think might have requested it, we're gonna do emergency response training for all the village employees. Mayor, am I correct, the village employees here, DPW, whoever you want, we have a very good detailed plan that we put together, that we presented at different places, I have Detective Sergeant Mick Marsh, who is a team leader on the county spa team that I am the oversight for in the county, and he put together a tremendous presentation, and we go in and we like to train them, and how to respond to a critical situation, what to do, what not to do, and also things such as catastrophic incident, active shooter, and we're gonna present this plan to everybody, and it'll probably take about an hour and a half to two hours from start to finish. So Mayor, we're ready to go, we spoke about it today, we will custom tailor it to the village employees, so we're ready whenever the village would like to.
Great, yeah, thank you, I, you know, after the events that happened last week, um, it really came to, to my mind, what would we do, and I know that we do active shooter training, but emergency response training, um, advising the employees and what actions they should take, or as you said, should not take in any event of an emergency or a crisis situation, so we're gonna have to schedule it, we're gonna have to break it up into different groups.
Sure.
Um, you know, from within the building and the village hall, DPW, water, wastewater, and just to put everybody on a, you know, uh, make them aware of what to do.
I think, Mayor, it's a great idea, I think the advantage of our village hall, having the police department within it, always gonna have people in a station that can run up an emergency, however, by the time something happens, a call gets made and we run up, it could be a minute, two minutes, you wanna make sure they know what they're doing at minute to minutes, if an incident happened at one of all the village facilities outside of Village Hall, you wanna make sure they know as well till we get there, so we do this kind of training in schools, this will be a little different, geared more for municipal work, but we, and I think it's a great idea, and Mayor, thank you for bringing it with the employees, cause I think it's something probably longer to do, I think it's great to do.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that, uh, quick response on that, that was perfect. Speaking with Detective Sergeant Rick Marsh and Lieutenant Lachlan and yourself, great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Fred Rela, grant writer.
Good evening, Board. Uh, for those of you who are interested, the Jeopardy champion lost tonight, so, um, I know we're, yes, so, he lost 15 minutes ago. So he did not get the record. Anyway, I'd like to talk to you about grants, obviously, um, I'd like to thank Mike Genito and his staff, and, uh, Chief Osborne, um, helping us get the reimbursement check through the Division of Criminal Justice Services for approximately $4,500 for the four M4 rifles that we were able to acquire, so, thank you both, uh, for that.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned at the workshop, uh, the Community Development Block Grant application had to be in on Friday, uh, we were somehow omitted from the communications from Rockland County, so they only gave us a few days to actually get the application together, and I'm happy to say that, uh, we were able to submit it on time. Uh, the project is, once again, for sidewalks on Park Avenue between East Maple Avenue and East Park Lane, okay? Total project cost is approximately $110,000, the grant we're asking for $100,000, and the Village of Suffering would contribute $10,000, uh, or 10% of the amount that is actually awarded, and that resolution for, uh, that subsidy of $10,000 or 10% was approved at the January board meeting. Um, I do wanna just make you aware, in case anyone does ask, in another area of the village, like why my sidewalks aren't done, um, first of all, it has to fall within the low to moderate income area of the villages defined by the U.S. Census 2010, okay? Also, you have to complete, a complete section of sidewalk between two streets, so in other words, like, if you're doing East Maple Avenue, you have to do the entire stretch between Washington Avenue and Orange Avenue, you just can't pick individual slabs to do. I know there was a recent inquiry by someone on Prairie Avenue, and Prairie Avenue, only a very small portion, maybe 100 feet, of it actually fall within the, uh, low to moderate income area, um, so you have to do the entire Prairie Avenue, like, between Boulevard and, uh, East Malpe, so it just did not qualify for this application.
Right.
In case anyone asks, or you could direct them towards me.
Great.
Okay?
Yep, okay, thank you. This time I'd like to open it up to audience participation, but before anyone comes up, I would like to acknowledge the Suffering Varsity Basketball Mounties, they won the section, the double A section won.
Baseball.
Baseball, what did I say?
Baseball.
Oh geez, baseball, sorry about that.
Twenty years.
Championship yesterday on, on Sunday, so, um, congratulations, go Mounties, we're doing well in the, in the sporting arena. Girls look for us, every, everyone is covered there on the Mounties, they're doing great. Alright, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Hi, Bob Morris, 24 Terrace Avenue, Suffering. Uh, last week I gave everybody, uh, a handout, uh, concerning the ward system, and I know when Ramapo was in the midst of having the elections on the ward system, everybody on the board was all for it, and the turnout for the Village of Suffering was huge in response and in favor of the ward system. Uh, that seems to have gone by the boards, but Suffering has the opportunity to institute its own ward system, which I should point out, we had a ward system here in Suffering, uh, it was approximately 50 years ago, and it was changed for political reasons, the, uh, political party that was in dominance at the time, uh, changed it to, uh, an at-large, uh, electoral system, and that was simply so that they controlled the board and all the positions on it. Uh, the ward system, I think, if you read through the flyers, uh, kind of explains it, that this way, uh, the, the village would be broken up into four separate areas, uh, we don't wanna go to six and increase the cost of the village, but four separate areas, and each area would represent, would be, would elect a representative. Uh, it's very similar to the United States Congress, uh, uses the ward system, uh, the county legislature uses the ward system, Clarkstown uses the ward system, uh, we can get it on, uh, the process, uh, requires the board to vote for it, that doesn't mean it's implemented, it simply means that, uh, we can then put it on to the November ballot as a proposition, and the residents of Suffering would have a chance to, uh, voice their opinion of whether or not they wanna go on with this. And again, the, the very same reasons that it was viable in Ramapo make it viable here in Suffering. Uh, it prevents block voting from occurring and controlling the entire town board, uh, village board here, uh, and that's what we'd like to avoid, uh, so I don't know if yous have had a chance to read it, uh, but it's, I think it's fairly important, uh, for yous to take a vote on it and decide whether or not you wanna pursue this, uh, I didn't hear it discussed at the workshop, so I'm not sure if yous had any discussions over it, but we should take some sort of action and not just sit on it. If you don't wanna do it, then let's all vote no, and we'll go on from there, but, uh, I think it's imperative that you do make a decision one way or the other, okay?
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Uh, please state your name and address.
Jim Janatino, 2 Memorial, Suffering. If I remember correctly, we were given money from Altice for a new sound system?
Yes.
I think it's time.
I think it's time, let's put that, Kathy, let's talk about that tomorrow also, the, the money from Altice, and I believe that we have a, a grant, is that correct, um, Mr. Genito?
Yes, Mayor, uh, the money has come in.
Right.
And I've notified, um, actually Bruce and, and others, and Kathy, that the money has come in for the, um, that, that was awarded to us. Now it's a matter of picking the right system, uh, I believe it was $21,000 that we were granted, and, or 20,000, and to pick the right system between camera, video, audio, and in some places, in a lot of village halls now, and city halls, what they're doing is fixing cameras that are movable within the, you know, uh, hall itself, so that they're fixed, as well as the sound system, and then all of the recording is in a separate location, like, perhaps behind the stage or in another room, where it's controlled by an operator. And, and that allows for a lot of, uh, flexibility, and you don't have to worry about equipment being in the back of the room and set up and broken down. So in any event, I've asked Bruce to take a look at it, uh, Bruce Simpson, to take a look at, Bruce Simon, I'm sorry, to take a look at it, uh, knowing that he has a lot of experience in this area, and to make some recommendations, uh, and I believe he's already done some of that research, so we are working on it.
I'm getting a nod from the back of the audience? Yes. Okay, great, we'll follow up with Bruce, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Carol, hi Carol.
I wanna grab this, Chief Ford, because we, we haven't had any really bad storms or floods, but we had the Suffering Rising meeting, and they were addressing the, uh, how to get people out if a particular area in Suffering was severely hit. In the past, we've had tornadoes go through, we've had overflows with the streams and the flooding, uh, people have moved down to Squares Gate, one of the questions was the Ramapo Riverside, and how we would get people out of there in an emergency, or where they would go to take them, uh, where they could stay, before we used.
We have some emergency shelters throughout the village, so that's, you know, that's something we can do.
Are they set up, or do the people, are they aware? I don't think most of the people in the community are programmed into.
They would be directed probably by the fire department and the police department in where they could seek, um, cover, shelter.
Because the last time we used Sacred Heart School and Washington Avenue School.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we'll take a look at that again.
As they, uh, were able to relocate people or find other places to go with their families and contactings, they moved people from Sacred Heart over here because we had people and, uh, they stayed here.
We have great emergency response, and with our first responders, they're able to handle everything that's put in front of them and direct people as necessary on where to go and what action to take, definitely. I don't know if all of the public is aware, but the police and firemen are.
[inaudible] Yeah, place to place, but we were forcibly, we, Kathy, now, he's spoken considerably, he's been complaining, I think it'd be a competition, [inaudible], bring them up, plan it to what to do with every situation, not one of his actual family members, so we do notify them based on the incident, I just wanna [inaudible] because [inaudible] 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 to each one of ourselves, I'd say we're [inaudible] we made a lot of [inaudible] where we have [inaudible]. [inaudible] be your favorite.
Alright.
You're in good hands.
I do.
Thank you. I did see a representative from the building department, but I don't know where he went. Anybody see him out there? Joe?
Yeah, he must have got a call or something, man.
Yeah.
I think he did, I see, I can kind of reach him off the [inaudible].
Alright, so we'll skip over him and we'll move to Department of Public Works, Mr. Zawiki.
Um, no.
What have I got for him? Okay, thank you for looking.
Good evening. Uh, provide a, uh, an update on the Maplewood Boulevard guardrail installation, uh, has been rescheduled for next week.
Oh, it does?
Contractors, uh, because of weather has been.
What date, did he give date?
Uh, I don't have a specific date, as soon as I, I, I do receive that date, I, we'll send out a notice.
The residents were really looking forward to this, today.
Right, and we've already met with him, he's, uh, called in for his mark out, so he's ready to go, and just getting the manpower here to actually get it done, so.
Okay, the mark out's done?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, at least he's called it in, it's, as far as I know.
Okay.
Um, I am requesting payment authorization for application for payment number four for Valentine Electric in the amount of $44,526.50 for the South Street Pump Station Emergency Generator Project.
Okay, I have the resolution authorizing payment number four to Valentine Electric for the South Street Emergency Generator in the amount of $44,526.50. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Steve Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Trustee Gerard, any discussion?
Excuse me, how many, uh, more payments are due to Valentine on that?
Well, actually, we, um, give you a, a partial update. We just, um, took delivery of the generator. He rigged it up on the roof today. Um, so I would anticipate at least two more applications.
So it's presumably the fourth out of six. Is that a fair statement?
I believe there should be six.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
The, uh, field portion of the, uh, the tree assessment on Washington Avenue, uh, East Maple Avenue, uh, East Mulpey Avenue and Park Avenue, uh, has been completed. Um, the written report should be available next week. Uh, trees were cut down on Campbell Avenue, uh, by Orange and Rockland, uh, as a result of overhead power line concerns. O and R, um, did contact property owners and, uh, did receive, um, consent and had them, uh, sign off on consent forms for those trees coming down. The, um, we had a, a number of electrical, uh, items that, um, have been addressed most recently or are currently underway. The monument lights have been rewired and replaced with LED bulbs. Uh, new electric service, uh, is being finalized, uh, this week at, uh, Foxwood Pond for the air, the airator at the pond. And, uh, so what, a couple of, uh, components there, we have, as we talked in the workshop, we have the UL, um, inspection, and then we need to get O and R to place the meter. So, um, we're going to try to expedite that as quickly as we can, so that we could, uh, get that airator functioning. The railroad, uh, underpass Chestnut Street, uh, lights have been, uh, modified with new conduits and, uh, new LED lighting. Um, and, um, just, um, sent out email, it was short notice, uh, came, the last proposal came in for the LED lighting in the business district and, uh, in the parks, and including the ballards. And I believe you have that in front of you. Um, so essentially what, um, and I, you know, sending out that email. So currently we have, uh, the pole lights, um, require approximately 200 watts with the bulb and the ballast. With these new LED bulbs, um, you don't need a ballast, and, um, requires 45 watts. So there's, um, energy, significant energy savings, and, um, the LED bulbs have a significant long life, so it'd be, um, reducing the parts and maintenance, uh, component to the area, the problems that we've had in the past where we seem like we just can't stay ahead of, uh, lights being burnt out and having problems. So the, um, the low-cost proposal is from Valentine Electric in the amount of $12,306. So that includes, um, 33 lights in the business district, 11 of the Ballard lights, three lights in, uh, John Suffolk Park, uh, three lights in Avon Park, and three lights in Point
Now, 12,306 is slightly higher than the number on this proposal that you gave out earlier, which wanted to clarify the numbers. It's close, but it's not the same.
Okay. 12, I stand corrected, is $12,280.
I'm sorry, Charles, that, um, that small park area that's next to, uh, Danina's?
John Suffolk Park.
That's, that's, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's included. Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, so the three main parks, all of Lafayette, downtown Lafayette and the side streets, for a total of 42 and 11 ballards.
Right.
Right. $12,280. So I make a motion that we move forward with this LED lighting project, um, and award it to Valentine Electric in the amount of $12,280.
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Albert.
Second.
Second by Trustee Hertzman. Any further discussion?
Just a question on, when did they commit to doing this?
Well, um, I spoke to the contractor this afternoon. Um, it's going to take, he, um, believes it should be two days to get the, uh, the bulbs. And I explained our situation, and, uh, we have, I believe, nine lights that are currently out, and he would make, uh, it might be, might be more, whatever the number is, he would make, um, his manpower available to get those corrected immediately, and then we would schedule the remainder of the work. That's how we'd plan on doing it.
Okay. So when, when you say immediately, how immediate is immediate?
Well, I said the bulbs would be two days, and then as soon as the bulbs come in, he would schedule his manpower.
So maybe by, by the end of the week, we would have...
I, I, I believe we should be able to get, uh, get that addressed. We'd certainly make every effort to do that.
Yeah. It can't go on like that any longer. It's like every day, there's more and more lights around, and it's pitch black down there.
Yeah, it's pretty true.
I'd almost feel better if, is Clark there? Is he still here?
No, he left.
Oh. If he would have foot patrols there, um, especially on the weekend, if they're not going to be there this week.
Well, I'll give you, uh, provide you an update. Uh, yeah, I'll reach out to, uh, Michael can provide me a purchase order tomorrow. Um, I'll reach out to the contractor and try to expedite the best we can.
Okay, so, do, these all, uh, 42 poles and 11 ballards, these are all on, currently on meters of some sorts, so we're currently paying by the watt?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, they're owned by the, uh, the village, and we pay the electric...
So in, in theory, we should see an immediate savings once we install all the LED on our power bill. That's great news. Great news. That'll be something that can help the village residents year after year, build, pay itself back.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the lowest bid is also, that we're not waiting longer just for the low, you know, for the...
Well, I, yeah, I made it clear to him what our situation was, and he, he assured me that he would make every effort to do whatever we need, so.
He's a very big, uh, electrical company. He's very big, Valentine.
Yeah.
Yeah. He should have the staff and, uh, supply readily available.
Okay. Moira, I believe you had the opportunity, I, I was unfortunately, uh, had to work last night, believe it or not, till 2:00 in the morning, but you had the opportunity to see the lights, so you would agree, from what I read, it sounded like you agreed that the LEDs were comparable to the other, uh, to this, the...
Yeah, I, I thought that they would be brighter.
Yeah.
But it didn't seem to be. I was a little concerned that they might be overwhelmingly bright, um, but I thought that they were fine.
So it's a good replacement, then?
I think so. It's a nice, nicer, more pure white.
Yeah, it's a whiter, should be a whiter light.
It's a yellowish shade.
Right, right. So I'm trusting that judgment, that sounds great. Thank you. Thank you for being able to do that.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
The, uh, San Torre Sewer Abatement, uh, pipe replacement work on Hallett Place and Prairie Avenue is now complete. Just addressing, you know, any minor punch list items with the contractor. I am requesting authorization for Mr. Steve Cartier's to attend the Hudson Valley Waterworks Seminar on June 12th, 2019, in Montgomery, New York, at a cost of $30.
I have the resolution authorizing Steve Cartier's to attend the Hudson Valley Waterworks Seminar, June 12th, 2019, in Montgomery, New York, at a cost of $30. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, second.
Second.
Trustee Gerard, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I just realized I skipped F. Uh, demo and training for the Anacon product for sidewalk repair, uh, will be scheduled, uh, within the next week or so. We're trying to, trying to finalize a date that we can get the representative out here. And, uh...
You know, someone, I'm, I'm sorry, um, I'm trying to think of who spoke, I, I spoke to someone else about repairing the sidewalks, and they were saying to use regular maca, regular asphalt? Like, take that out, and you'll be able to float, I guess, the asphalt around the...
Well, you wouldn't use asphalt once you did it on a temporary basis, uh, to my concrete, you know?
Yeah.
No, it was asphalt, it was, actually, it was me you were having the conversation with...
Right. What was that?
When I started out researching Anacon, and then I was looking for, um, alternatives for heaving and cracking sidewalks, was the use of asphalt, uh, because it's a little more forgiving in your ability to go around the roots, uh, a little easier, plus then you can also paint it so that it could color match to concrete.
All right, well, we, yeah...
It passes for the handicap.
Yeah, we have in the past, on a temporary basis, replaced, if, if we had to say, take, uh, remove a tree and its stump, uh, we would at times put asphalt in there on a temporary basis, then remove it. But certainly we can, we can look at that, I, I don't know if, you know, we'll have to evaluate what, what is the best, uh, best system for us, and we'll, hopefully can get that started next week.
Okay. It's like, when you do do, um, repairs to sidewalks, particularly due to the root heaves from trees, i- is it always that you just go ahead and cut down the tree, or do you ever do, um, root elimination?
Well, um, historically, we've taken the tree because it's, generally, um, it's at a point that the roots, as a result of the roots, uh, continuing to grow under the sidewalk, that's what's, what's heaving the, uh, the concrete's, uh, flag. Um, in discussions with, uh, you know, we've had some discussions with our arborist on whether we would, you know, we would want to attempt to just cut the roots and then see if the tree lives. Uh, the success rate apparently is not very, very good, and that just, it just doubles and triples the amount of work that we have, you know, if, you know, that we have to go back and then, uh, remove the, then we have to remove the tree, remove the stump, potentially may, may need to remove the, or re, uh, reconstruct the sidewalk once again. So, um, we do look at it on an individual basis. There might, there are some instances where the tree may not really impede a great deal on the slab. We might look at it and say, okay, we, we can, you know, make some provisions to keep the tree. But unfortunately, most of the time, the tree roots are so large and so entangled under the slab that it's, usually the tree has to go.
Do you know, can you usually see the difference between pervious concrete and imperv, you know, regular impervious concrete? That maybe, like, with the, with the community block rant, with the new sidewalks that would, to be installed? If you had, say, two or three trees along a new sidewalk run, is it possible to do four sections with standard impervious concrete and then switch to pervious? Because that's usually the problem, is that the trees are searching for water, right? And that's why the, the roots tend to heave up, and then heave the sidewalk, and they have found that pervious concrete, you know, allowing a little bit more water.
Oh, yeah, I'm unfamiliar with, uh, that technique. There is, uh, Cornell had patented a, um, a soil compound. It's a mixture of topsoil and, uh, almost like, um, an item four, um, quarry mix, um, that has been used, and, and that seems to be fairly successful. However, it's, it's very expensive. It's very expensive to, you have to, you know, just even the material alone is very costly. But I'll look at that. I never heard, I've never seen that or heard of, uh, that being used. No, I'm not familiar with porous concrete, but not being used in that particular situation for that reason. So, um, you know, certainly we can look at that.
Okay.
All right, great. Great going. Great.
Um, just one other item I have, uh, and, uh, Michael might have touched on one or two of these items, uh, from the fire department, the fire chief. But I'm, uh, requesting, uh, to surplus the submitted list of equipment, submitted during the, uh, the workshop.
From Joe's list.
Okay, so I have the resolution to declare certain village equipment as surplus. You have the list attached to board members?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? We reviewed it at the workshop. Nothing has changed, is that right?
No, nothing's changed.
Okay, so I have a motion, um, to declare a certain village equipment as surplus.
Motion.
Trustee Albert, and second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
All right, thank you.
Uh, one question, Charles. I know we discussed it briefly, but just to make the board and, and, uh, public aware of, um, the road restoration on, on Ramapo Avenue, that we, that we discussed, and if any, any residents have any, um, concerns or, or potholes, they should notify us. Is that correct?
Yes, well, uh, we have, um, been in contact with O and R when we've identified a problem, we've reached out to them. They've been fairly, uh, responsive. Uh, so yes, if they see something, you can let us know, we'll reach out to O and R.
Okay, I've been receiving a couple of calls from residents in regards to the potholes. Maybe somebody can run Ramapo Avenue and just ensure that if any potholes exist, let's call O and R, and I know that the trench has to settle before it's restored properly. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Speaking of that subject, um, Charles, is there, is there a time where your department comes out with proposals for which streets would be...
Yes, I just mentioned, had a brief discussion with the mayor, uh, this afternoon. Uh, I plan on having that next month.
Okay.
Uh, I'll be working on that over the next, uh, couple of weeks. Uh, we have a list, and we're going to try to finalize and see, um, what we can afford this, this year.
And they prioritize it to the need of the...
Right, 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 yeah.
What, you're talking about road replacement, road repaving?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Great, thank you. Well, Mr. Janito?
Oh, good evening, board. Uh, a few things on our update. We are, uh, now at the end of our last fiscal year, which ended May 31, 2019, and we're communication with our auditors, preparing for the forthcoming audit. Typically, that'll take place sometime around September, because our payments that come in from the state and the county don't come through until the end of August at, at the latest date. So typically, they'll be in doing fieldwork in September, and we hope to have the financial statements published. Our target is for the month of November. That's for May 31, 2019. Likewise, we brought forward, today is our first business day of our new fiscal year. So this morning, we opened up our new budget, uh, brought forth all of our, uh, purchase orders that would have rolled over, as they say, that are still active, and, you know, of course, there's a lot of work checking to make sure all of that is in place and properly brought forward, which we did, opened up our new fiscal year. Now, the other thing that we are doing is preparing a bid for the financing of the two police cars that we had in the budget for fiscal 2020, and we mentioned we were going to finance those through an installment purchase contract, commonly known as a lease purchase agreement. And so we have to not only, well, the police cars themselves can be purchased and are going to be purchased under a state contract or a county contract, so we don't have to do a competitive bid for those, it's already been done. Uh, however, the financing as well has to be competitively bid, so we are going to prepare a document and present it to our attorney. It's actually pretty simple, it's just the bidding of a, approximately $92,000, $93,000 for two police vehicles. One is marked vehicle, one is an unmarked vehicle. And, uh, that will go through the standard process that you would use for a bid, where you advertise it and, um, open the bids and award the bid, uh, to the lowest responsible bidder. And, uh, the other thing that we've been working on is the EFC, Environmental Facilities Corp financing, for our various sewer projects, so that has been ongoing, as they required more documentation, we've been presenting it as requested, and it looks like that we will probably be getting some of our money in August, and the rest of it in October in terms of the financing and/or grants through the EFC. And this is all their timetable. We have documentation of what we need already for them, but it's their timetable when they issue their new bonds and, uh, go out for their new fiscal, their new fiscal year, which is different from ours. Uh, we also met with, uh, the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. You know that, uh, we are in the middle of trying to get a $3 million project essentially, totally grant funded, uh, through New York Rising. And initially, we had DASNY, the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, as the vehicle for which to process all of the activity in that. Um, that's being revisited in terms of new information, that the project may be more than $3 million. We, as a village, want to keep it under the $3 million so that there's no out-of-pocket cost for us. And the whole project is about hardening our water facility and sewer facility in the event of flooding, to prevent any kind of damage to the... of damage to the equipment and keep it operational during a crisis. So, but we did meet with the governor's office of storm recovery. And today, we received email from them with a series of documents that we will be, we will be presenting to the board. It's a process that will take a little bit of time. Fred Rela also will be on board with us to talk about this. And the other thing we did was issue our tax bills effective June 1, 2019. And for the public to know that the last payment for the tax bills is due on June 30, after which there would be interest and/or penalties for late payments. People can go online and search for their tax bill and pay it online by a credit card or by what's known as an e-check, which is a debit to your bank account. So that's pretty much what we have for you tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Tishner, are you available to speak? If you could provide us with the updates as listed on the agenda, if you have the information in regards to 27 Hillside.
I apologize, mayor, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. 27 Hillside Avenue. Do we have an update on where we stand with 27 Hillside?
Yes, we do. He will be back in court the next court date. We have, we received a letter, or a response, I should say, regarding it, stating that he did not receive the letter until, you know, recently. However, Rob Magrino, the, as far as John stands, the ball is in Rob's court. We're just following his lead. He'll be back in court this next court date and we'll see.
So we put him back in violation?
Yes, he's back in violation, again. So that, that court date is Thursday. It's in two weeks.
Okay.
So it's, it's, we'll see what happens then. Again, we're kind of following Rob's lead on this.
Yeah.
We don't want to.
Understand.
And then the only other thing to discuss was Teresa has, had expressed some interest, as Susan did, as we were talking today, about possibly setting something up upstairs so that people can't enter, as you were speaking with Chief Osborne.
Yes.
So that people can't just directly walk into the office. I'll speak more with Steve about that tomorrow and see what we can't get set up.
But we could share that with the board. So the board, make the board aware that we have.
For years now, if, if myself or Steve or Frank Wilson, if one, if all of us are out of the office, it leaves, it left Susan, but now Teresa up on the third floor basically by herself. So over the years, we've been talking about getting a buzzer or, you know, keeping the general public unless we wanted them to come in the office when, when the rest of us aren't there. So the easiest thing obviously to do for now would be a blockade of sorts, maybe a half wall as you enter into the building department to, to.
Similar to the clerk's?
Absolutely.
Office.
Yes. So it's, so that only Teresa can decide who to let into the office, when to let them into the office. It's just a little bit of added precaution for her when we're not there. I'll discuss with Steve. As I said, I have some leftover stuff. We'll see what we can come up with.
Right. Okay.
And we'll keep you posted on John.
Do you know anything about the three cross street and the condominiums and the repairs on that rear wall?
Yeah, they have, they have made the repairs on the pool. As far as the facade, it's still an ongoing process. But the, the repairs have been made on the pool. So the, what was damaging the structure has been done. Now we have to get them to finish the.
Can we follow up on that?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you.
Take care of it.
Does anybody have any other questions in regards to building?
We had that other issue about buzzer come up.
I wasn't going to, yes, we're working on it throughout the building.
Okay.
Something in security related that?
I apologize, I had to step out. It was a gentleman who purchased the Heinz Playhouse Building.
Right.
He's going to be in front of the board. He's, he's going to keep the character of the building. It'll, it'll, in essence, all of the original will look the same and he'll add some on to it. It's actually going to be really pretty.
Great.
Hopefully, the board will approve it. But keep you posted on John.
All right. Thank you.
Joe, just one, one thing. It was, I think it was last week, but there was a gentleman that was in that, he was a little upset that he was trying to get the paperwork for a permit to remove a tree.
We don't do tree permits.
Or what was it for? It was some kind of?
It was, it was, it was a tree, came into my office.
Yeah.
Wasn't it a tree per, yeah, it was a tree permit. He was not happy with the?
Tree permit.
That he had to purchase it. Many people aren't happy with purchasing, getting a tree permit.
That aside, you know, his original complaint was that when he first came, and I guess either the building department was closed or the door was locked and that he had tried to talk to somebody else to see about, he just wanted his paperwork, that nobody else was able to, to help him. And he was a little upset that he had to come back a second time to take down a tree that he didn't feel he needed to get a permit for. But when somebody comes here and there's nobody at the building department or the door is locked, like where should they go? And could you put a little signage there that either they come to the village clerk's office or somebody has to be able to access big, basic?
There is a sign, yes. As you enter in the building. I mean, there is a sign that says everyone that comes in should go to the village clerk's office. We, we could put a sign on, on our door that says, because the village clerk's office has a copy of all of our permits. The problem with that is no one other than the building department knows, no one other than the building department knows what you do and do not need a permit for. Our permits are online. They're, they, you know, again, we can hang a sign that, on the door that says, you know, that any, any applicable permits can be made, taken offline. However, again, we don't do tree permits. And that being said, I understand that, you know, people would love to be able to contact us 24/7. However, we, we do have a part-time building department. We try to cover the office 24/7, or I should say, you know, eight to four.
This was not before Saturday, bud.
But, I mean, you know, we, we have it covered for the most part. There is some gaps where if Teresa's at lunch in the afternoon and I have to go out on inspection, there's nothing we can do about that. I mean, like I said, we could, we could hang a sign on the door that says, you know, it's kind of a gray area though, because not everything requires a permit. We like to, we do like to speak to people face to face. So that if we do need to stand up in court at some point in time and say, we discussed the fact with you that you did require a permit to do this, at least this way we can do it, where they can't turn around and say, well, we talked to the village clerk's office and they said we didn't need a permit. Or, or, you know, we got a copy of it. We like to keep it in the building department. But again, we don't do tree permits. But we can always, you know, I'll run it by Steve. We can put something outside the office that says, you know, you can, you can obtain a permit online, however, it has to be submitted in person so that we can discuss it with them. You know, again, if, if the average.
I'm not looking for the village clerk to make a decision over whether somebody needs to fill out an application. It's just if they're coming in looking for an application to complete.
Sure.
And the building department office is closed, where could they go to get an already available application for whatever?
Village clerk's office or online. All of our permits are online. And the village clerk's office has a copy of, we only have one building permit. It's, it's literally one page. So they can always go to the village clerk's office. And again, you know, there is a sign as you walk in a building that everybody should go to the village clerk's office prior to going up. That's another security measure that I think that sign needs to be more pronounced because no one does it.
I've never noticed it.
Good idea. Just that alone. I know it does say that, but we should do something else along those lines, right?
Again, I'll be happy to speak to the department head tomorrow and see if we can't get something on the door that says, you know, if, if this office is closed, check with the village clerk's office.
Right. Okay.
I have a question. Hang on, I have a question.
Hold on, Joe.
So.
Myself and the board.
Carol, trustee Albert, do you have a?
I have a question.
Carol, Carol, one, hold on, Joe. Just let the trustee please finish up with you.
Yeah. So I heard you say two or three times, we don't do tree permits, but I heard Moira say that somebody came in looking for your department for a tree permit. So I'm a little confused and I'd like an understanding of what's transpiring here.
A lot of people do think that because the name permit is on it, a lot of people think that they would go to the building department. The DPW, because it's, it's a tree, it's the property, it's not the building, the DPW handles tree permits.
I see. So basically, this person was coming to the wrong plate.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand, you know, one person saying, coming to you for a permit, and you're saying, no, we don't do that. Wait a second, this is, this is one of these, you know, it's that.
And it's because the word permit is on there that they, they always end up in our office.
Okay. Just wanted clarification. Thank you for explaining that.
We happily walk them to Charles's office when, when they come in.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Appreciate that. I think Carol has a question for you. Go ahead, Carol.
This is about the security. When you get the security cam, can you get it set up so that it can go to the clerk's office with a picture of people coming in on the camera that can monitor it? Or it can come up on the cell phone of a person?
There's a lot more involved than just putting in a, a, a security camera. And we're currently in discussions about it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just, I was thinking, looking into it, because so many people, even for their businesses and other purposes, they come back with their own personal cell phone or their business cell phone so they can look at it and they can see wherever they are.
Okay. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you. Thank you. Trustees.
I, I do have a question. So I brought up something at the workshop meeting regarding the chief discussing felonies and discussing overtime for the month. And I see that that was dropped off this, I'm sorry, at the workshop meeting, I brought up a possibility of the police chief during his point where he discusses the goings on of the police department to discuss the quantity of felonies for the month, for example, and the amount of overtime and the cost of that overtime over the preceding 30 days. So I noticed that was conveniently missing from the agenda today. So I wanted to inquire about that.
He, he did make a statement right at the very beginning.
He stated how many blotters there were, but not how many felonies and not how much overtime.
Right, it was in detail. Okay.
So I wanted to know, is this something, is this something we can actually count on going forward? Or is it something that we're not interested in doing as a board? I'm not sure where that stood.
What did you, why didn't you ask Clark when he was here?
Well?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that, you know, query in the department head at the same time.
Agreed, agreed. My point is.
At the same time, we'll bring it to his attention and, and ask for that information.
Okay, that's fine.
But absolutely, you should ask him if you have a question.
And, and regarding the other item I brought up, is that something that we can look into going forward? I mean, you seem, you know.
What was the other item? I'm sorry.
The issue of, of, of who covers shifts when people are on vacation.
That's what we've been doing, yes.
So, well, in other words, I brought up a particular issue at the workshop.
Right.
So there was some question about the legal side of it.
The contractual obligation to the union officers and the non-union officers.
So the question was, in other words, Ralph, I believe, had basically had some concern because of past practices. But I'm not sure, you know, I'd like to delve into that further, basically. I'd like, I'd like a little more research done on that.
Okay.
Thank you. My goal is to save money for the residents. I think we're overtaxed, as you all know. And, and if we can save money, let's do it.
Anyone else?
I asked him about, I asked him about no parking stops.
Talking to the microphone.
I talked to the chief about the no stopping, standing, or parking on the Chestnut. I'll speak to him again personally, because he's gone and so, why ask now?
Okay, then. Anyone else? So going, going back to the chief and the police department, I have the accreditation here for the New York State Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, which we reviewed with the chief and the lieutenant down, down in the department. We did sign it and forward it on. The CSEA negotiations update, we are continuing our negotiations. We have, I believe both sides proposed about 30 different changes and we're dwindling those proposals down. We're having another meeting, I believe, next week. CSEA president's here, right? Next week?
The 18th.
The 18th. We're exchanging the, the reduced proposals on the 12th.
The 12th.
Correct. Okay. We are making advances there. I think, I thank the CSEA for their patience. Doing a great job. I could smile, Joe. Okay, next I have a resolution here authorizing Susan Focello to provide consulting services to the village of suffering and the mayor to sign the agreement. Resolved that Susan Focello of Suffering, New York will provide consulting services and assistance in the area of training and development in the office of the building department during a period limited to staffing transition. Be it further resolved, the mayor will mark this hereby authorized to sign the consulting agreement with Susan Focello. I can't say that name.
Focello.
Focello. Do I have a motion? We're going to use Susan, as you all know that she retired. And we have a new, we have Teresa Sheddler working in the building department. And we want to have this as a failsafe in the case or need of Susan's expertise in permits or anything that went on in the building department on an as-needed basis at the same rate of pay that she was receiving as an employee. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That's good. That'll be a big help. Next I have a resolution authorizing the payroll department to pay Susan Focello for nine days of unused vacation. Equates to 63 hours. Resolved authorization, authorization for payroll department to pay Susan Focello for nine days of unused vacation. Ms. Focello has retired from the village effective May 25, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Girai, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion?
Is that a normal practice, ma'am?
I think during the transition, that when Ms. Sheddler took over, that we needed that guidance from, and she waived her vacation in lieu of the pay.
Can I just ask you, why is nine days?
Seven.
Nine days, seven days.
That's how she approved and they kept it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. What else do we have? Next I have a resolution establishing the position of program assistant in the village of suffering. Resolved that the board of trustees hereby establishes the position of program assistant in the village of suffering. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, can we just get a little bit of background on this one, this one?
So the background was that we created the program assistant through the civil service, Rockland County Civil Service a few months ago. And we're fulfilling this by establishing the position here in the village of suffering and just taking the civil service title and number into the village.
Is this in replacement of some position or?
No.
Do we need this position? I mean, what?
Not at this time.
So we're not going to fill this position?
No, not yet.
Okay. So, and there's no statutory obligation to fill?
It expires in, uh.
February of 2020.
Two, something, 2021?
February of 2020.
Okay. If we don't fill it, you mean?
Correct.
Okay. Do we foresee a plan to fill it? Or is this just a?
Not at this time.
Okay. But to fill it at some future point, it would have to go before another vote, is that correct?
Has to go before the board.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is just a?
We're memorializing the establishment, the creation of the, of the position.
I see. Okay. I get it.
Not committing to the expense?
No.
And, and therefore no cost to the village?
Correct.
Okay. Then I'm on board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next I have a, I have a request to hold a public hearing to address parking on Orange Avenue and Chestnut Street. It says related to the Sheldon, but I would say it's related to the village. It's not directly related to the Sheldon, but on Orange Avenue. directly related to the Sheldon, but on Orange Avenue, since the construction has been completed, previously there was no parking on that side of Orange Avenue because of the automobile mechanic that was there, the parking lots that were there, so it looks like we were able to obtain about maybe four to five parking spots that we need to establish a timeframe for to allow parking on that portion of Orange Avenue. So I would make a motion to hold the public hearing on Monday, July 1, at 7:05. 7:05, public hearing.
Could you just clarify the Chestnut Street portion of this?
Okay, so also on Chestnut Street, prior to the construction, we may have lost parking, or we are able to pick up one spot, so we would have to also take a look at that and see if we have the space available to create an additional parking spot on Chestnut.
I don't know if this is related to that, but on Chestnut Street, at the ramp that leads back up to Orange Avenue, there's a huge pothole, and that's sort of like, is that something that the new, the Sheldon is responsible for, taking care of as part of their--
Well, not necessarily, it's probably, we are responsible to repair the pothole, but they are repaving--
So that has--
Blowout way.
That sometimes has blowout way, blowout--
Right, but I believe we should patch the pothole.
Okay, there is a large pothole on the left as you're coming up the ramp on the left side.
Right, okay, we'll note that. So I made the motion, do I have a motion on that public hearing, setting the public hearing?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is the request to hold a public hearing for additional handicap parking spaces in the central business district. Over the past couple of months, we've been analyzing a couple of different locations for handicap parking, along with requests from the public, so I would like to make that motion to hold a public hearing at 7:10 for handicap parking in the central business district. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Girard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Does anything, anyone have anything further? No, this time I like motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, trustee Hagan, second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you everyone for coming out to the meeting, please see Frank Hagan for any concerns.